Let's call this December 11 meeting of the Eugene Planning Commission to order. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your interest in the topics that we'll be hearing this evening. We have, we will be holding two public hearings and they're both on land use code amendments. The first one will pertain to the downtown no development overlay zone and then the second hearing will pertain to urban animal keeping standards, which is also known as farm animal standards. At this time, I'd like to just go around the table here and have the Planning Commission members introduce themselves. Commissioner Belcher would start with you, please.
Okay. John Belcher.
Bill Randall.
I'm Randy Lettich.
Jeff Mills.
Rick Duncan.
And we're expecting Steve Baker, that's why we held up a little bit here. He's on crutches and I think making his way to the meeting. If we could have the staff introduce yourselves as well?
Nan Lawrence.
Alyssa Hansen.
And I'm Kristy Brown.
The way we'll proceed this evening, ladies and gentlemen, is we'll have a brief presentation from the staff on each topic and then I'll open the public hearing. And I think you're all aware, if you'd like to speak, we need to ask you to fill out a green slip that's on that table back there and hand it to one of the staff people. When you're called to come to the table, if you just sit down at the desk there near Kristy, and for the record, state your name and address. And because of the crowd size, we're going to ask if you would please limit your comments to three minutes. Alyssa has a timer and so if you'd be courteous to the others and when she gives you the signal, start wrapping up your comments. Certainly, the Planning Commission would like to get written testimony from you and I can assure you, this group will read whatever you give us. Want to indicate that we will not be making a final decision on these proposed amendments. That's the city council's job. What we will do after the hearing is deliberate and make a recommendation to the city council. We'll probably be doing that right now, December 17th, at our regular meeting, which is from 11:30 to 1:30, right here in this room. And once we give our recommendation to the city council, they will then conduct hearings on these two items as well. So any general comments from staff at this point? Any comments from commissioners? Okay, then, let's go to the first public hearing. Nan, you want to tell us about downtown nodal development overlay zone code amendments?
Yes, the topic of tonight's first hearing is the proposed amendment to the ND nodal development overlay zone. The purpose of the amendment to the nodal development overlay zone is to allow a drive-through facility as an ancillary use in association with multi-story structures and to allow the adjustment process, the adjustment review process, to be used to consider a drive-through facility as an ancillary use in association with single-story uses that provide financial, pharmaceutical, or government services. So the current ND overlay does not allow any flexibility regarding use. This overlay is actually more restrictive than the transit-oriented development overlay, which applies to most properties downtown. The amendment would apply only to properties with the ND overlay within the downtown plan area and currently, only five properties have that overlay in downtown out of 624 properties. So the impetus for this amendment came from recommendations through Envision Eugene as well as multiple stakeholders. The amendment is consistent with several strategies in the Envision Eugene proposal related to making compact urban development downtown easier, actually to make compact urban development easier downtown on key transit corridors and in commercial areas. And it's necessary as part of the strategy to accommodate the city's 20-year commercial need inside the urban growth boundary. There are several related amendments that will implement Envision Eugene, but we're processing this particular amendment on its own because of city council action to sell a particular property for the Northwest Community Credit Union's use. So since the release of the staff report to Planning Commission, two pieces of testimony have been received. I'd like to submit the email from Paul Conti into the record at this time. And Alyssa is handing out an email that we received from Gary Wildish. I'd like that to be included in the record at this time as well. So finally, the code amendment applies to section 9.8065 of the land use code, found in chapter nine of the Eugene Code, and the approval criteria at Eugene Code section 9.8065 are applicable to code amendments. That concludes my presentation.
Questions for Nan? Rick?
Do I remember when we did the Wall Street Station, we actually did a, I believe, used a portion of what's being proposed in this code in that, didn't we, as far as allowing to drive-through facilities?
Can you speak to that? I remember it being discussed, but I don't remember the details of the resolution. We'll find, we'll bring it to the meeting.
We can bring that to the meeting.
That's fine. Great, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, then, I'll open the public hearing. First speaker?
Dave Hauser.
Followed by?
Followed by Rex Fox.
Thanks.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on the proposed land use amendments regarding the drive-through facilities in the nodal development overlay zone in the downtown. My name is Dave Hauser. I live at 2168 Elkhorn Drive and I work for the Eugene Chamber of Commerce and Downtown Eugene Incorporated, two organizations that are particularly interested in what happens in our downtown and encouraging a safe, vibrant, and active downtown. We were very active in the land use code update process in the early part of 2000. In fact, I was looking back through my notes today. I think we submitted 60 pages of written testimony attached to the land use code update. And embedded in those 60 pieces of testimony were some comments at the time that were, that dealt with the expansion of the prohibition of drive-through restaurants in the nodal development overlay zone to encompass any use. And at the time, I think we believed it was a bit of a misstep. In our comments, we suggested that the one-size-fits-all standard might create some unintended consequences, such as making it more difficult for financial institutions to locate in our core. So it's always, it's never polite to say, "We told you so." But in this case, I wanted to point that out. We were really encouraged, however, in the, in the work plan for Envision Eugene, that one of the goals was to remove barriers to development in that work plan and that included consideration of adding flexibility to the ND overlay. So we support, enthusiastically support this amendment. We believe it's a very good idea. It facilitates the expansion into our core of an outstanding local company, Northwest Community Credit Union, something that I think we'd all want to see, a kind of project we'd all want to see. And it seems absolutely consistent with the pillars and objectives embedded in the Envision Eugene process, which we all spend so much time on. So encourage your approval of this amendment and thank you for your time, CP.
Thank you, Mr. Hauser.
Rex Fox, followed by Kim Woodward.
Hi, I'm Rex Fox. I live at 650 Kingswood Avenue. I work for Northwest Community Credit Union. I've been there since I graduated from college 35 years ago. And that's not to say how old I am, but to point out that we're a really good employer. And there are actually several people been there longer than I am, have been, and there are a bunch of people been there 15, 20, and 25 years. And what I'm just saying is, you know, we're bringing a really strong sought-after employee, employer to the downtown core, which I think is real a positive thing. We, it's important for us to have this drive-up to meet our members' needs and that's, we're in business of satisfying their needs. And it's essential that we have this in order for us to continue with this project. I live in South Eugene and I currently commute year-round out to the gateway area. And there are very few people who are brave enough, or maybe crazy or stupid enough, to actually ride through the gateway beltline interchange. And it really excites me to bring this, our big employee group downtown, really close to the River Bike Pass. And I think we'll see a lot more commuting. You know, and I can't make any promises, but our initial plans include having a bicycle lane in the drive-up area. And any of you who ride can appreciate not having to, you know, you're doing your banking, you have to dig your lock out of your bag and take off your helmet and all this stuff, your gloves, you could just ride up, do your transaction, and take off. And same thing with, you think about a parent with two small children in the car and one of them falls asleep and you're on your way to make a deposit to cover your mortgage payment and what do you do? You have to wake up the kids, drag them inside, or you flip through a drive-up. The drive-up is not the main thing for our credit union. It's just a, like Dave said, an ancillary part of the whole project, but it is really important to us. And I just urge you to strongly consider making amendment to, or changing amendment to allow us to do this.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Thank you. Kim Woodward, followed by Phil Farrington.
Hi, I'm Kim Woodward. I live at 1251 River Road in Eugene. And I came here tonight to ask you to approve the nodal development code amendment. We really are committed to moving our headquarters downtown and really want to be a part of the growth. I was at a recent board meeting where, you know, one of the board members who's lived here forever and said, you know, "I just, I want to be a part of this. I think this is something that's the right move for our credit union." And it just, you know, coming from her, who, she doesn't really open to that much change, she just really thought that this is, this is the right move for our credit union, to be able to serve our members in, in the hub of Eugene. But when we think about it, you know, the, this code is a real barrier for us. You know, if we're going to build, you know, we anticipate bringing about 250 employees to the downtown core in the next, probably over the next five years. So we see it as a good thing for the community as well as, you know, for jobs and employees. Our new site location would encourage members to not only walk, but to bike and, you know, just use all sources of public transportation, which are going to help the community as well. We feel that a drive-through is just an essential part, as Rex said, to our delivering service to our members. One thing that we've, you know, we've always committed was making it very, you know, the reason that people choose Northwest Community Credit Union over other financial institutions is because we make things easy and delightful for our members and certainly a drive-through would, would do that. They really count on that. And just like Rex said, you know, if you're a parent with small children, that's an important part, to be able to get in quickly and get out easily. And again, you know, for myself, being disabled, I know I choose businesses that have drive-throughs because it makes it a lot easier for me to get in and out quickly. But it's just for the average person that just is, is thinking of banking as a errand. I mean, and it really is. It needs to be a quick and, and accurate transaction and we think we can serve members in that way, too. Another issue is safety for our members. When we have small business owners making large deposits, they feel a lot safer not having to leave their car. And especially using ATMs in your, through your car rather than having to get out of the car and stand, you know, in the open area in the dark or sometimes, you know, in the nice weather that we have, the rain, you're, you're kind of hidden there and, and that, that makes it a lot safer for people that are using the ATM, not even just our members, but community residents that would be using those facilities in that area. So basically, I'm just here to encourage you to consider amending that code. It would really help us.
Thank you, Ms. Woodward.
Thank you.
Phil Farrington.
I live at 1160 Monroe Street here in Eugene. I've got some written comments for you, but I'll try and sort of paraphrase them here for brevity. Codes are important, but context is paramount. And when rigid application of code standards reveals unintended consequences, for example, the potential to scotch a viable infill development, then it bears considering the context of the request and whether modification of the code could merit, on balance, a preferred outcome. And we have such an instance before you now. In this case, you have a meritorious regional business seeking to develop new headquarters on a properly, a property that's identified for multi-story infill development. And from my experience as a board member of the Springfield Chamber of Commerce as well as an active member of the Eugene Chamber, I can attest to the considerable benefits that Northwest Community Credit Union brings to the Eugene-Springfield community in terms of their support of local charities or civic involvement and furtherance of sustainability principles within their sector and the largest business community, larger business community through their participation in Green Lane, Business Bicycle Challenge, and similar initiatives. Northwest is seeking to expand its local employment, add millions in construction improvements to a rather dormant local economy, and add their improved value onto the city's tax rolls. The proposal before you doesn't seek to gut the fundamental elements of the nodal overlay, nor to open up unabated auto-oriented uses on the subject matter, on subject site or any other site. In fact, the proposed code will still maintain prohibitions on exclusively auto-oriented uses in the nodal development overlay area and will not permit exclusively drive-through establishments. The proposed code amendment isn't earthshaking, nor would it establish a precedence. Allowing a drive-through as part of the proposed new credit union headquarters isn't really any different than the fact that there are drive-through facilities in numerous other financial institutions in the downtown core, namely Summit Banks, Century Banks, Sterling Bank, and my own credit union, Pacific Cascade. Since I wrote this, in fact, a friend of mine reminded me of three other banks downtown that also have drive-throughs. The urban purist would submit that such facilities are antithetical to a warm and inviting pedestrian environment, yet all these facilities coexist within a very walkable downtown that we have and can effectively be incorporated into the new facility design to minimize potential impacts on the pedestrian environment. And honestly, I hardly believe that denying this modest code amendment and leaving the subject site underutilized and in its current condition would improve the pedestrian environment. I mentioned earlier about unintended consequences and I'd like to remind you of one such instance. Some years ago, I worked as a consultant on a project to develop a nodal development plan for infill at the Chase Gardens area. Some in city leadership believed that accepting modification of certain development standards would result in a compromised plan and rejected our initial proposal, which would have resulted in not only a pedestrian orientation for future development, but a primary use, namely a grocery store, that was highly desired by the established neighborhood association and would have served thousands of nearby residents within easy walking distance. But the rigid adherence to certain design standards resulted in a different series of uses. Granted, what's there now has been designed very elegantly, but they're an entirely different use than envisioned and desired in the neighborhood and frankly, don't provide for an integrated neighborhood center as we originally proposed. Is that myself? Okay. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Farrington. Is that it?
That's all that I have.
Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak to this particular topic? Okay, if not, we'll close the public hearing. Nan, any comments?
No, thank you.
Commissioners, any questions for Nan? Rick?
Maybe just some information on the bold text on AIS page six, which is the area where we talk about special use limitations and so on. Can you give me an idea why you sort of decided to break out structures with two and more functional floors versus just a single-story structure?
We are really hoping for density and compact urban development. And so we broke out, permitted as a right, buildings that have multiple stories, but we could foresee examples where, for example, if a, I don't know, a drugstore wanted to come downtown or another use that would be community-serving but could, was limited to one floor, we could foresee wanting that as a possibility as well, but we thought that then should go through the adjustment review process. But as a right, what we're looking for is denser development in this area.
So the plan would be is a two-story or more functional floor building would, could be, any type of quote "drive-through" could be accommodated?
Yes.
Other questions for Nan? John?
Nan, could you bring us back when we deliberate the arguments that were made for instituting this prohibition of drive-throughs? The other question I have is why are we focusing just on this one zone and not in general?
I'll bring back that information. Let me make sure I understand that question. Why are we focusing just on the ND?
Well, in the downtown zone. Why are we making a change for five properties when we might want to consider for all those nodal?
I think that would be a larger code amendment and would require additional thought to see where, what intended, unintended consequences or intended consequences it would have citywide, but we recognize that the need is immediate for the downtown area. So I don't know that we've done enough research to really figure out how that change would affect neighborhoods where this code, where this overlay zone is in place.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff? Paul? Bill? Anybody else? Anybody see a need to keep the record open? Then we'll close the record as well. Nan, thanks very much. We'll pick this up again December 17th, right here, probably around, I think we have one item ahead of you, but we'll see you on the 17th.
Good. Thanks.
Thanks, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, move on to the next agenda item is the public hearing on urban animal keeping and again, also known as farm animal standards. These are code amendments. Kristy, staff report, please.
So the proposed changes to the land use code will help increase opportunities for urban farming in the city of Eugene. These changes support several goals outlined in city plans like Envision Eugene, city's climate and energy action plan, and the city's food security scoping plan. The aim is to strike the right balance between increasing the numbers and types of farm animals allowed in the city while also protecting the quality of life in our neighborhoods. So in 2010, the city council suspended enforcement of the number of chickens allowed based on community input. Earlier this year, in response to community interest, the city council initiated code amendments related to the farm animal standards. So city staff have reviewed rules from farm animals standards in other cities, met with local community members, experts in urban agriculture, to help develop these new proposed standards. In general, the proposal increases the number of allowed chickens, rabbits, fowl. It also allows two miniature goats, one miniature pig, and two beehives. The standards are meant to be outcome-based. They're not, it is not proposed to be a licensed program where there is follow-up by city staff. The rules will be based on complaints and meaning someone needs to submit a complaint in order to let the city know about a possible violation. The complaints will be followed up on by a land use inspector rather than going through the Eugene Police Department. So since the release of the staff report to the Planning Commission, I have received 10 pieces of testimony. Generally, three of the letters did not support the amendments. Seven of the letters expressed support to the amendments. However, four of the letters supported an increased number of beehives from anywhere from three, four, or no set number. One of the letters also encouraged the allowance for turkeys and increasing the number of miniature pigs to two. So I'd like to submit those letters in the record at this time. Also, since the release of the staff report to the Planning Commission, the proposed code language has been updated based on the city attorney review. There are three changes, however, none of them were, you know, substantial to the proposal. So those have been outlined as the prohibition of roosters, geese, peacocks, and turkeys was moved from the general standards to the allowed animals section under the allowance for fowl. And then the standards on care of animals and noise have been removed from chapter nine because they were already in chapter four, but the proposal now includes a reference in chapter four for administrative purposes, so land use staff can do that enforcement The Planning Commission was provided a copy of the updated code language on Friday and it was also posted online at that time. And extra copies are available if anyone hasn't received those. I did send those out to the interested parties list, but I'm not sure if, if you need those, those are available. And finally, the amendments would apply to section 9.5250, the land use code, which is found in chapter nine. And the approval criteria at Eugene Code section 9.8065 are applicable to code amendments. And that concludes my presentation.
Questions for Kristy? Rick?
When, this really deals more with sites over 20,000 people. In the first section of the report, it refers to this primarily for food or product sources and yet, when we get down, we see, I see things like horses, miniature horses, and animals, which I guess I didn't realize would have that type of use. Could you kind of explain to me how you, I'm talking actually, sort of the inclusion of four B5? Can you give me an idea what, how animals were selected to be included or excluded from this particular list? I hope I've got the same copy you did.
Yeah, yeah. So the allowances for those, obviously cows, you know, has a, has a byproduct, horses, not necessarily, but those are not a change from what was currently allowed in our current code. So we were looking at increasing the allowances for those domesticated animals, not making it more restrictive. So we really didn't look to pull animal types out of what's allowed currently today. So, so really, that wasn't part of our task that we were looking at updating.
Did the purpose language change?
Yeah, there was no purpose language before.
Okay.
So yeah, there, and the existing code language was also part of the AIS packet. So you could take a look at that, but we were trying to make it just clear, obviously, the purpose statement is not enforceable. It's just trying to provide some guidance. Also, hence why we changed the name, so it's not, really not Farm Animal Standards anymore and looking at it being Urban Animal Keeping is the title now as well.
Okay. Is that it, Rick?
Yeah, it just seemed like a little bit of an inconsistency to me. I guess that's because I read too much code in my life.
Jeff?
Yeah, I guess I, I had kind of a two-part question and that is how the 20,000 square foot number was chosen, the basis of that criteria. Because I noticed it seems like that's a pretty important number because you go from, you know, six chickens and a number of goats and rabbits or chickens and rabbits to unlimited.
And that would be something as well in the code scoping sheet that we, I provided that is not a change to our current code.
Okay.
So the 20,000 threshold is existing code, so we did not, it's where it comes from. And there is no limit on those animals currently.
That's no change either.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is that it, Jeff?
Yes.
John?
So I understand that wasn't direction to look at things that were already goat, but does that preclude us from discussing them?
No, and just keep in mind also the food security plan and the recommendations and those are all those things that play into that. Absolutely doesn't preclude that. That's why, that's why we're here. But that wasn't part of the recommendation that I put forward to you.
I understand. As you know, I have a concern about an infant, a chicken, and rabbits being allowed on a property. Thank you.
Other comments? Rick?
One other about sanitation. It seems to me to be a little bit lax if, when it talks about compost piles and so on being located five feet away from property lines and with enclosed containers and bins. Do we have a description of what an enclosed container or bend is?
What I'm thinking about is if it's something that allows water to flow out of it, if you're on a hillside, it could affect an adjoining property owner if it's five feet away. Do we have some way to?
You mean as far as leaching or?
Leaching and leaching.
Yeah. Well, no, but that, that is something that is enforceable through chapter six. So that's per, you know, something that would be dealt with already. There's already code language. You wouldn't be able to do that. The main reason for this is flies. So when you have compost and you have open compost and then you start adding animal waste to that, it then creates a fly problem. So by keeping So, by keeping it enclosed, and this was also one of the things that I was able to get some recommendations from the OSU Extension Service, and that was one of the things, because we were like, you know, that is something that I heard verbally, somebody calling, it wasn't written testimony that's submitted in the record, and it seemed like a legitimate concern, and that was something that we talked to them about, and they also recommended enclosed compost. So, usually, you're talking about some of the bins that you can turn. It's not going to be prescriptive enough, because really, if it meets the outcome, if it really meets the intent, it shouldn't be causing a problem. If it's causing a problem, then it's not meeting the intent. So, that was really, you know, what is enclosed, I'm sure it has air holes for it to compost, I'm sure it has, you know, components in that way, but it's not just an open pile on the ground. So, that was kind of the intent. Does that help?
Yeah, no reason to suggest that we have definition in the code that describes it.
Yeah.
We run into the definition problems all the time.
Sure.
For variety of codes, so, just a thought, maybe something to check in about.
Anything else for Kristi? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, before I open the public hearing, since some of you may have arrived late, if you'd like to speak to us tonight and haven't filled out a green sheet, please do so, and hand the sheet to one of the staff members. When we call your name, please come to the table, and if you would, for the record, state your name and address, and again, please limit your verbal comments to three minutes. Lissa has a timer there, I think it went off once. And certainly, once again, written comments are absolutely invited, and we will take a look at those. So, with that, I'll open the public hearing.
And, first person is Denise Swanson, followed by Judy Share, if I'm saying that correctly.
Hi. I'm Denise Swanson, my address is 8033 McKenzie Highway. Actually, want it to be Eugene, but currently, without having my goats to come in town with me, that's why I'm not in Eugene. I brought a picture of my goat today, it was rather exaggerated in his features, and wanted to show you that size-wise, this is the height that he actually is. I have two goats that are fixed males. And I have a setup at my house currently with him, where to show the type of fencing, which is livestock fencing, which is below six feet in height, and you can see with him standing here, even on top of a dog loo, he stands about this tall. And with nothing up against the fencing, which you have it back behind property lines, there's nothing for him to climb onto because of the height of the, of his building that he has right here. So, he stays in, and you know, really, what this comes down to is, as a responsible pen owner, I don't want my goats out. I don't want them in my yard, I don't want them in anybody else's yard. I don't want pets to get at them like dogs or anything else. I really, you know, think that the guidelines that you've instituted here are very well-thought-out and well-done, and I have a workable model. My goat is 12 years old, I've had him for, since he was two and a half weeks old, so I know this can really work. He's also, both of my goats are really a prominent member of, members of my work group, because I do composting with, I mean, the compostable food waste that would normally go into just your garbage, that people who live in apartments can't compost themselves, bring it to work. I carry a three-gallon bucket home and feed it to the goats. And then, I take their waste products, which I put into a bin with straw, and I keep that as the compost, which goes in my grapes in my garden, and then, when I have grapes, I make juice, I make jam, and then, I bring it back to the, to, you know, people at work. And so, it's kind of a little closed system that works really well, not counting how much they can cut down on waste, yard waste, with blackberries, anything like debris that comes off from the trees, I can put it in there, and it makes it, short work of it very fast. So, they're kind of a very working model. I mean, other fact that these guys aren't milkable goats, that's also an option, too. I think they have a very good kind of system. And, they're kind of cute, but they're also, they're like big dogs, I'll tell you that right now, as, as big as my dog, so, anyway.
Thank you, Ms. Swanson. Judy Share, followed by Bill, and I, Bees.
Bazooka.
Bazooka. Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Judy Share, I'm, I live at 1092 West 10th Avenue, and I'm currently the president of Land County Beekeepers, and they want to advocate for bees. You'll see in the letters that many of the people there talk about the benefit of honeybees, and there are many, mostly pollination for fruits and vegetables, and also, because urban bees don't suffer the same stress as the bees in commercial enterprises, where bees are declining, or have been declining in number. People have complaints about swarms, but even without bees in an urban area, there would still be swarms, because bees swarm from three miles away. And beekeepers love to collect swarms, there's a list of us for the city to take advantage of. So, I think that beekeepers in the city are an asset. Some people are concerned about stings, and most of the stings are yellow jackets and not bees. The yellow jackets are enemies of bees. Honeybee sting only when you get too close to their hive, and they become defensive, or you step on them if you're barefoot, but mostly, mostly the stings that people get are from hornets and yellow jackets. I want to advocate for a flexible number of hives, because good beekeeping management recommends that you, you have a flexible number of hives during the year, and this is for preventing swarms if your hives are too full, because then you can divide them, and you can, you can replace lost hives and/or lost queens by combining them. And I don't want to teach beekeeping, but I advocate keeping two-plus hives, and the plus refers to half hives, so that at various times of the year, you may have four hives, which are the two full hives and the two small hives, or you may have two hives when you combine them, or divide them, which I do, and then, if I have too many, when I divide them, I'll relocate the greater number to a different area, or relocate one into the country, or sell them. Beekeepers need to provide at least one source of water, because I understand one of the complaints is that people are finding bees in their swimming pools, and beekeepers need to stay educated. And then, the last thing is that my neighbors love my bees. Even one who's allergic to stings, and they would be very sad if my bees, if my hives went away. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Share. Would you mind answering a question from one of the commissioners?
Unfortunately, when we do things like code writing, we have to somehow be very prescriptive on things, and the concept of two-plus probably wouldn't work well, and our city attorney probably would shake their head no on that. Can you give me an idea, if you had your choice?
Okay, my, my choice, okay, would be up to four. Okay? Because that, that would be really good management, and really sensible management.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Who do you have next?
Oh, excuse me. Bill Bazook, followed by Brad Foster.
Good evening, my name is Bill Bazook, and I'm the owner of the Eugene Backyard Farmer, located at the fifth, the corner of Fifth and Washington. As the owner of the area's premier urban farming supply store, I have a very unique perspective of what's happening in people's backyards in Eugene. We talk to customers on a regular, daily basis, and we get to find out what people are really doing in their backyards. We get to find out about their plans, as well as their challenges and difficulties. I'm happy to say that urban farming has become a very strong component of our communities. If I were to sum up what's really happening in our backyards, I would quote Register Guard writer Ed Russo, in his article dated November 17th, he started by saying, "The way Eugene regulates backyard farming is about to catch up with reality." What this means is that people are already keeping chickens, and ducks, and bees, and turkeys, and in some cases, even microlivestock. As I look through these proposed regulations, my sense is that it does a very good job of balancing the needs of the urban farmer, as well as respecting the rights of the non-urban farmer. I think that when you're looking at regulations, there's always going to be the numbers game. You know, for my household, three chickens is more than enough, for larger household, maybe six chickens is not going to be enough. I don't feel compelled to get into that numbers game, because overall, I think the numbers are workable to the vast majority of urban farmers. I do want to talk about this as a business perspective owner. I have three concerns about how the verbiage works in here. Two of those concerns are playing the numbers game, so I'll submit a separate letter if I might later, because I'm sure that would put me over the three-minute mark. But, I would talk, would like to talk about general standards being, what this suggests is that persons responsible for keeping the animal shall reside on or adjacent to the properties. What this would do would be to preclude, preclude my store from keeping urban farms at my, at my store, since I do not live there. Part of my company's philosophy is to display everything that I sell. There's nothing more urban than the corner of Fifth and Washington. I have an overpass practically over the top of my building. It's very empowering when a customer comes in, playing with the idea of wanting to raise chickens, they see that I have what I believe is one of the most attractive small flocks in the city, in the heart of downtown. I also keep a couple of beehives at my store. In addition to some outstanding honey, my beehives operate as an outstanding security force. If you've ever been into the alley behind Fifth and Washington, you know it's a really rough place, needles, bottles, graffiti. Ever since I put up my signs advertising that I have two active beehives on my property, instances of vandalism and attempted break-ins has gone to zero. If I were to offer alternative verbiage, I would suggest under 3B, except for an animal kept on-site by educational or religious institutions or a related business. My other concerns are the prohibition of turkeys, as well as some of the minimal square footage required, but as I said, I'll reserve that for a written letter, and thank you so much for your time.
Yeah. Mr. Bazooka, do you have that testimony tonight to give us?
I did not, I prepared, I prepared a long statement, and I didn't realize I was going to have just three minutes.
How much time would you need to prepare that to submit?
Ten minutes? It'd be handwritten. Yeah, I could go back to my office to have it emailed to you by, you know, the next hour or so.
I'm just thinking.
Or first time tomorrow morning.
Yeah, I'm thinking, like, maybe tomorrow. Yeah, well, a day, John, maybe. Okay, thank you, Mr. Bazooka. Yeah, yeah, okay. But, we're just, we're thinking about it an administrative issue here.
I understand.
Okay, thank you very much.
So, Brad Foster, followed by Susan Thomas.
Hi, I'm Brad Foster, I live at 1315 Bailey Avenue in Eugene. I like what Judy said about people, I want to speak to bees, and too many people around here confuse bees with wasps and hornets. I rarely meet someone who lives here who doesn't know, who knows the difference. It's really hard to get stung by a bee, they're incredibly docile, far different than wasps and hornets and such. And, so I think that perhaps there's a misunderstanding about the threat they pose to people's quality of life in their neighborhood. In fact, I have a number of beehives in my, in my yard. A person came to check on it, because I had, I had, I had taken a swarm from his front yard that he didn't want there, and he came to find them. He, all he knew was about where I lived, and he's walking out there, looking and looking and looking, he can't find them, because they're really, they're really difficult to, to find, they have no impact. There's also, this, this limit of two hives is ridiculous on a lot of, a lot of senses. Some hives, like those swarms I picked up, a couple hundred bees. Other hives, I've had bees with tens of thousands of bees. There's, a duck's a duck, but a hive is not a hive. They're numerically quite different, and their impact would be, of course, quite different if there were any measurable impact. I would like to say one other thing aside from, please raise the limit, is change the step back from this. I think this thing says 15 feet. The distance isn't what's critical, change it so the opening of the hive does not point towards the perimeter of the, of the property. There can be an impact from bees, only when the hive opening points towards the perimeter of the property, then people can find themselves in the flight path, and you get bopped in the head, and bopped in the head, and bopped in the head. And then, just a little basic bee biology, you know, we're having a crisis in bees in this nation, in fact, globally, it's going on, and if you limit people to two hives, you condemn them to either failure when their hives die from either the Mite problem, or colony collapse disorder, or some other disease, or being forced to import bees from somewhere else, in which case, they're bringing in new diseases to our area, which, again, is not going to be good for our ability to keep the bees viable here, which we desperately need. I live next to three community gardens, they were all thrilled when I moved in with my bees, because everybody got better produce. Thank you.
Mr. Foster, I have a question if I can. What? I'm curious about beehives ranging in size from a few hundred to a few thousand.
Tens of thousands.
Tens of thousands. When I think of hives, I think of white boxes.
Right.
Are there different-sized boxes, is that somehow the, the number we're looking for here to try to?
There are different-sized boxes in two of the three dimensions. They're all the same length, let me take that back, they even vary there, but what you generally see vary only in two dimensions. They're generally all the same length, some are little nuke hives that are narrow, and then, you vary by, some are, some are tall, and some are shorter, what we call western hi, western boxes, and then, of course, they stack, that being the beauty of them. And so, you can have a hive that is one little nuke, you can have a hive that's eight boxes tall, and they're all full, and I've done that.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
That paints a picture. Thanks. Okay.
Susan Thomas, followed by Judy Granatstein? Did I say that right?
Yeah, I'll pass, because what I'm going to say is already in there.
Okay. You're Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Okay.
So, then Judy, did I say that right, Granatstein?
Very good, very close. My name is Judy Granatstein, I live at 390 North Polk Street in the city. You do have written testimony for me in your packet already, but I'm just going to give a, a couple of quick sentences here. One is that I do believe that minimum lot size is very important to leave it, right now, we're at nothing to 20,000, and then, 20,000-plus. So, that can be a lot of activity on a small lot, because there are many lots in Eugene, particularly since one of the long-range goals of, of planning, as far as I know, it still is to maintain the urban growth boundary and look at more dense urban development. So, there's small lots, there's going to keep having more small lots, and to have goats, pigs, a lot, just, it's too much, in my opinion. Farm animals should stay on the farm. In terms of lot size, over 20,000 square feet, I believe someone here mentioned a limit, and I think there should be. To leave that open-ended, that means that my next-door neighbor who has well over 20,000 square feet could decide to have 30 or 40 chickens one day, I'd be very unhappy. So, I think there, there does need to be some sort of language on the limit on that. So, under the 20,000, we need to think about a minimum lot size, over the 20,000, maybe some caps on number of animals. One of what I see as a big problem here is that we already have a lot of rats running around Eugene and other vermin, and this is not because of, it is due in large part to composts and other animals that are around, but the, the problem is not the compost, the problem is the compost owner. The same thing with the farm animals, the problem will not be the farm, the animal, the problem is with the owners. Intentions in Eugene are always terrific, practices aren't necessarily as good, and I see that over and over and over again, that personal responsibility for one's property, one's dogs, and this will extend on to, it's already in compost, it'll extend on to animals, and it'll make for more rats, the rats are crazy already, people think I'm crazy because I talk about the rats, but I see them, I know how many of my neighbors have trapped, they're around, and they'll get into, people do not responsibly keep their chicken feed, they're this feed, they're that feed, they get into it, they make nests in the bedding of the animals, it goes kind of on and on, and they're pretty hard to eradicate if they get kind of going, so I think that needs to be discussed. I do think that, that the, for me, I wasn't clear what enclosed meant in terms of bins for compost or whatever. Does enclosed mean enclosed, or does it mean enclosed, covered? And I would like that to be somehow clarified, because I do think covers make a huge difference besides just enclosures. And then, that the, this program would be enforced based on complaint is kind of iffy, it's not necess, fully realistic in my opinion. People, people don't really understand how that process necessarily works, they just get upset, and then, they live with it. And yes, it can, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Granatstein.
Barbara Allen, followed by Jeannie Harden.
Hi, I'm Barbara. Hi, I'm Barbara Elliott, and I live at 495 Lone Oak Avenue in the Santa Clara area, and I'm a beekeeper. I have a vested interest on the outcome of these meetings about animals and bees. There is a very big issue with the honeybee's health, and it should be a very big concern to everyone, not just honeybeekeepers. It's called bee die-off. If we don't have honeybees, we don't have pollination, and in end result, we lose a big chunk of our food supply. Honeybeekeepers are trying to stop that from happening. So we need to help, so we need help limiting, keep from limiting beekeepers to two hives per lot. It's not helping. Four hives per lot is a better number, because a lot can happen to just one hive. A weak queen, mites, and other outside sources can be, take out one or two hives in a winter and a beekeeper has nothing in the spring, and they have to start all over again. And to a lot over 20,000 square feet, it should be more than four. The beekeepers can't afford it, they can manage it. I have a member of, I am a member of the Lane County Beekeepers Association for four years, and I'm trying for the second time to be, have a beehive. I've been meeting, to the meetings and classes during this time, trying to get it right. My first hive, I got in April, and my son caught two swarms in our backyard in June. So far, they are all there. It's a lot of work, and you really need to be educated on how to care for them and to keep them healthy, and it can be pretty expensive on having hives. I'm trying to be a self-sufficient gardener, that I do it the right way, and I could supply honey, fruit, and vegetables to ten families, or more, or less, but I need the honeybees to achieve that goal for pollination. If people are concerned about any part of beekeepers having honeybees in their backyard, then they need to come to the meetings and to the classes. They would be a great for everyone, and everyone would benefit and find out how, to be educated on what it is to be a beekeeper. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Elliott.
Jeannie Harden, followed by Catherine Hunt.
Hello, I'm Jeannie Harden, and I live just outside of Eugene, off of Lorraine Highway and Chesum Road, and we have nine Nigerian dwarf goats and one beehive and chickens. And I'm here to talk about the goats. I'm so, so happy that you have been doing what you've been doing. I'm very happy. I think that people in Eugene are going to be thrilled with their goats. I was, I guess somewhere in this, and not right now, but online, I thought I saw a 10,000-square-foot limit. Was, is that, okay, then I misread something, that's great. I feel that in a room this size, which looks to me about, I don't know, 30 by 30 or something like that, four Nigerian dwarf goats would be a small number, a really small number. When we first got our two goats, our first two does, you know, it's just anecdotal, but they, they were like the odd couple. They actually didn't like each other a lot. They didn't fight, but life wasn't all that exciting, not until they had babies and we had a little herd. I know, you guys have just, all you've heard about is we want more, we want more, we want more, not enough, and I really can appreciate the balance you're trying to strike, because a lot of the concerns that I've heard from others are serious. But I really think four Nigerian dwarf goats are the way to go, I really do, especially if you get one that's a weather. He's not going to be producing at all, and he doesn't stink or anything, that's a neutered male, and two or three females will create enough dairy for your whole family and a little extra to trade for some of those great tomatoes or jars of honey next door. Another thing, I hope to see seriously, because it is a lot of work to take care of goats, I would love to see neighbors working together on projects, and I've already met a lot of people who talk about that, and I would like to imagine two families on two lots gathering their, maybe allotted two Nigerian dwarf goats together, so that they did have four together and shared the responsibility. There would be a difference in the setback then from the property line, but I, I've talked to a lot of people who are thinking along those lines, and I would highly recommend that as a model, if neighbors could get along that well, to work on a project like that, because it would free them up from some of the work. So, thank you, thanks for all your hard work, yes.
Ms. Harden, are Nigerian dwarf goats the same as the photo that we were shown at the beginning of this hearing?
You didn't mention.
No, they're piggy mentioned.
You have piggy.
And then I have weathers, so they're already fixed and they don't produce milk, but.
Yeah, so, same size, though.
Same size?
Yes. So they're really the size of a medium dog, not even a big dog, a medium dog, and yeah, they're darling. You can pick them up, the worst of the biggest oversized Nigerian dwarf goat, and I've got the big oversized one, I can pick them up. And when he's naughty, I can pick him up, put him somewhere else, and I like that about them.
Okay, thank you very much.
Catherine Hunt, followed by Jen Hornaday and Doug Hornaday.
Good evening, my name is Catherine Hunt. I live at 130 Hanson Lane, just off of River Road, and I've been involved in beekeeping since 1975, when I married a beekeeper, and we've been commercial, side-liners, and now we keep backyard hives. We are members of Lane County Beekeepers Association, and we've been involved in that group for many years. I think it's very important that one should be able to keep more than two hives in your backyard, as you can prevent swarming by dividing them into more than one hive. If you start the season off, say, with one hive, and it's strong, you'll want to divide it before the season's over, and that will help prevent swarming. And then you'd have two, and then if that other one is strong, you're gonna, you may divide it down again. Or if you have a weak hive, you need another hive in order to take brood from it to help strengthen the weak hive. The bees in the backyard, of course, help with local food production in our own yard, as well as in our nearby community gardens, and the byproduct is, of course, our delicious honey that our bees produce, and as well as pollen and beeswax, which we use to make candles. So I would urge you to revise its rules and allow us to keep up to four hives in our backyards. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt.
Thanks.
So Jen and Doug Hornaday, followed by Pablo Valentine.
So do we need to get three minutes, or is this? Sure. I don't need three minutes, but I think my wife will.
Especially because he wrote a letter to you guys already, and then I didn't write anything till I just got here, because I thought that the letter was going to be sufficient. And we didn't think that anything was, we spoke with Dylan until next week, so. Anyway, I'm Jen Hornaday and Doug Hornaday, and we live at 65 East Maynard off River Road, and we're the owners of Healthy Bees = Healthy Gardens, and so we're trying to create pesticide-free zones here in Eugene, and we're doing that for just this year. And so we need everybody's help to be able to, you know, create as many, as much food for the bees out there so that the bees can do their job. And what that means, like everyone knows, is we want to live organic and start out for all of our quality of our air and our breath and our children are, you know, and all the kids and the plants and the, you know, and the bees, and everyone can do their job correctly. The bees, for those that aren't beekeepers, they've got such a neat system working, and we can learn so much from these bees. You know, they kick the men out in the wintertime and they just go to work and keep themselves warm. The drones, which are the male bees, they go in and out of hives. Any hive they go on in, they just, you know, smooch up to the gals and get on in there and do what they want. So if there is a beekeeper that's not educated, that has an unhealthy hive, those male bees will come from that hive and come into our healthy hives and make our hive sick. So that's, you know, the underlying stuff that a lot of us don't know about, a lot of non-beekeepers that aren't educated don't know about, they just say, I'm just going to leave my bees alone and let them do their work, but they don't realize that they've got sick bees and they are putting all of us else who are working so hard to keep them healthy at risk, because the drones are coming in and out. We can't do anything by putting any detector up like a special cat door, where only bees that live there can go in and out. So that's other stuff that is, no one else has spoken about, I think. So like Judy was saying, they need water so they don't go into people's systems of their, you know, hot tubs and pools and things like that, and that's really easy to do. And if you go to Lane County Bee Association meetings, you guys will learn every single, you know, month about what is needed. We highly are wanting you guys to hopefully get us three to four hives to be able to keep everything healthy and safe, and that is, you know, with our strong hives, to be able to, if we've got one that's sick, we can't, if we've got a swarm, we can't combine that with a sick hive. We need to have the ability to be able to manage our hives in a safe manner, to keep everybody healthy. If we're getting a new queen that we're buying from California, it's costing $65, we don't want to throw it into a hive that's not going to be safe. You know, people who are beekeepers, we're in the master beekeeping program, and we've probably put $8,000 into our business this year alone, just on supplies, and that's not any of my time or gas. When I'm feeding the bees, it's 12 cups of water, 24 cups of sugar, and mixing that up and feeding every hive, nine hives, every five days, that's a lot of work, and that's on top of my other three jobs. So you can do the rest of it.
Thanks.
Thanks.
So my name's Doug Hornaday, and I live at 65 East Maynard Avenue, and I got into beekeeping years ago, when I first came to Eugene, I started catching swarms, and immediately I fell in love with my bees. It's gotten to the point where my wife and I have actually dedicated our lives to honeybees, and we care deeply about them. I was concerned that my neighbors were poisoning my bees, so we started this program to host hives in the name of the honeybee, to try to get people not to use pesticides in our environment. And one of the main things we're doing is we're trying to educate people, the importance of bees. And, you know, in learning about this stuff, we went to the OS, we started out and we went to LCBA meetings and learned so much about the bees, and they teach us so much, but then we decided we wanted to get an OSU's Master Beekeeper Program, and one of the very first things they taught us was that, you know, you need to have a minimum of three hives, and without that minimum, you're not going to get your bees to survive. There's too many things going wrong with bees these days, and it's unexplainable. You know, there's so many different things that are in nature now, but because I love the bees, I came here to plead with you guys, to really think about the importance of bees in our society, because they are extremely important. In order for, you know, in my own yard, with the bees we have, all the trees in the neighborhood were loaded with fruit, and the fruit was big and beautiful, and we didn't use spray on any of those trees. And so because you have the pollination, you get the pollination, but you can get master pollination, you get fruit that is full, large, and big without spraying, and that's what we need. We need that pollination here in our society in order to have a, you know, a sustainable environment. So that's the goal with honeybees. We want sustainability, we need honeybees, bottom line. And we all know it, it's, the science has proven it, so that's your answer.
Responsible for every third bite.
And they're responsible for every third bite of food we eat, right? So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Hornaday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pablo Valentine.
Pablo Valentine, 225 East 33rd. I just generally want to put my plug in that I agree with most of the changes here, and I think it's great that the city would allow a little bit more urban farming in the city. I think the numeric standards could be raised a little bit. I actually agree with one of the statements somebody said, I think in opposition, but what people do with their urban animals is more about responsibility of the animal owner rather than any sort of numeric. I mean, you could have somebody that has two chickens and is irresponsible with them, and somebody that has a dozen chickens and does a fabulous job, and the neighbors never even know. And especially with, I'm a, I own some chickens with our family, undisclosed number at this time, but there's a certain point in time where chickens stop laying, they stop producing their pets as well as livestock, so, you know, my kids would not appreciate us slaughtering our chickens once they come to the age where they stop laying, or one got hurt by a raccoon. And so it's nice to be able to have, it would be nice to be able to have more chickens than even six, so that you can have a continuous supply of eggs, especially during the wintertime. And as many people say, once you taste farm-raised or urban farm-raised eggs, it's a tremendous difference, and we're always sad when we have to go buy some eggs from the store. I'd also point out, and I don't know how this helps or hurts, but if you were to look at the animals allowed section, and somehow somebody had six chickens, six domestic fowl, two goats, a pig, and a bunch of bees, that's probably far more impact than, say, eight chickens. And so there's a certain kind of sliding scale here that maybe should be considered on, what is a larger impact than another one? And particularly also put in, bees are no impact whatsoever. I mean, you see a hive or two, and you'll never even know that they're in somebody's backyard, as long as somebody is being responsible with them. I also think it's great, I think the noise disturbance continues annoyance, in other words, nuisance standards in the city code is probably a better enforcement mechanism for somebody who is keeping farm animals, because that's going to do a better job of detracting from the types of behavior we want to prohibit, which is people who are being irresponsible with their animals, allowing them to disturb their neighbors, to create a smell or noise nuisance. And frankly, people with cats and dogs can be, create far more of a nuisance than people with chickens and goats, and hopefully, especially the animal waste sanitation should apply to dogs and cats, I hope, too, because, again, that can be far more of a problem than many urban farmers who are being responsible with their animals. I also am very happy that you're including public land expansion to allow, say, schools to have animals, especially chickens that they can particular, but other farm animals, I think is a wonderful way to teach children responsibility and, you could say, the cycle of life and death. So I strongly support that expansion, too. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Valentine. Anybody else? That's it for the green sheets. Does anybody else care to address the planning commission?
I'm sorry, what was that question?
If anybody else wants to address the planning commission this evening. Okay, then.
Do you have a beekeeper?
I don't, I don't hear.
Ten chickens, we only got one egg a day now, so.
I don't see anybody else.
Two, oh, two, two. Come on up there, yeah. Please do.
Would you please state your name and your address?
My name is David Elliott. I live at 495 Lone Oak Avenue, also. My mom had mentioned that I caught two bees, or two swarms in the backyard. The very first swarm I caught, a friend of mine that was allergic to bees was with me. They did not bother him at all. Mom and I had to do a trip to California, and while we were gone, he was actually feeding our bees for us. He had no issues with them bothering him. They were rather docile. I've never seen a swarm in the wild until this summer, and it was very interesting and thrilling at the same time. And for us this year, we got 13 pounds of honey, and it's the best tasting honey. And our vegetables did far better than they have in the previous years. So I would also encourage three to four hives. I'm learning so much with helping my mom raise these bees. So it's just, not just, you know, taking care of them and, you know, helping gardens grow, but, you know, I'm learning something else, aside from everyday life. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Elliott. Anybody else? Okay, then we'll close the hearing. Keeping the public record open, we had one request. Do you think tomorrow, 5:00?
Oh, for Bill getting his stuff in, yeah, that'd be great.
Everybody okay with that? So I don't think we need a motion for that. We'll just keep, Mr. Bazook, we'll keep the record open until 5:00 tomorrow, so if you would, please, get your written testimony to Christie by that time, and then the record will be closed after that. Okay? Thank you. Questions for Christie? Bill?
I have a question. I know Rick brought up earlier the question about defining enclosed on the compost bins. Do we have a definition on hives? As far as size or configuration, or how that would, so what?
A hive is a one-queen bee.
One-queen bee?
Serving however many bees that that queen can serve. I mean, really, that's what defines usually how large the hives are. I mean, really, that's what defines usually how large the hives are.
Or the better.
I mean.
There are actually hives with multiple queens in them.
So someone's going to go out and count the queens?
Yeah, ladies and gentlemen, we have to, I'm sorry, the hearing is closed. We've got a limited conversation now.
Oh, you want us to go now?
No, 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 no. No, you can stay, it's just that the hearing is closed, and Mr. Hornaday's lost his chance to defend male bees, but that's.
I'm allergic, too.
He's definitely allergic to bees, and he does immunotherapy, and now he goes to sting himself, so. Maybe reeducation and then go back out. So, cool.
Do you guys have any questions for us, who are the beekeepers?
Yeah, we'd like to.
I don't know, not, that's what they're going to do.
We can talk to you about bees. Yeah.
Yeah, how long that.
We kind of get that sense, yeah, appreciate it.
You guys know about those drones and stuff?
A hive right there in the back deck would be perfect.
And the yellow jackets and the blue jacks, the ID's.
Thank you.
We can band wrap all the way around.
Okay.
I've learned a lot through this whole process, I will say.
And I still think 20,000 square foot needs more than four hives.
Sorry.
May I?
No, I'm sorry, but.
I just want to tell you, thanks.
Appreciate it, but the hearing's, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Comments, questions for Christie?
Did that answer your question, Bill?
It did.
Okay.
Rick?
Well, actually, I guess yes and no, and unfortunately, I'm very ignorant about all of these things, so part of what needs to be done, I think, is somewhat educating me, something else I'll note later. But it seems to me that there has to be a better way to define a hive for code. You said one queen, and someone just mentioned that they could have multiples, so is somebody going to go out and count them? No. So there's got to be some way, and someone else said that you could, and I've seen these, where you can stack them and build them like Legos. So it just seems to me that we need, yeah, we need to have some way, I think, if there is a problem created and somebody caused, you know, somebody sends in a complaint, there has to be a way that staff can respond to that. And so it seems to me we're going to have to find some way to sort of define what that is.
What the problem would be?
Well, what a hive really is. I mean, she says it's one queen, but I've got, I've got something the size of this table, and I said one queen.
Yeah, really.
That is different. And again, I don't know enough about it, but it just seems to me that somewhere we need to get a little more clarity on how to deal with what that really is.
Well, just to clarify, you're not going to have multiple hives that are stacked. A hive is one stack. So if they can support more, basically, boxes, because there's 10,000 bees, then you're going to have higher, a higher box, stacked boxes for a hive. So it's not like you're intermingling between two hives and they, you know, coexist.
Does that mean that they could get?
Absolutely.
I'll talk to these, how it become.
Well, I would say that technically, there's probably not a limit. I mean, obviously, they have to maintain them. So they're not going to get taller than typically what they can reach in and maintain and pull out the honeycomb and deal with the bees, because they have to maintain them. And I've learned a lot. I'm not an expert, I'm not a professed expert, but I have learned a lot.
We aren't either.
And what I would say is, you know, they have to maintain them because the other, the wasp, the yellow jackets actually do a lot of damage to hives, they have to get into them. It's one of those things to.
Christie, it's, you know, I think Mr. Bazook said it well, and I don't know if it's his philosophy or what it is, but it struck a chord with me when he says, "We're trying to accommodate the farmer and still respect those that aren't."
Right.
And so we're stepping into an area that can invite upon the city a whole lot of angst, I guess. And we just need to find out a way to do this, but still address the concerns of people who don't want to live next to farm animals. And I'm trying, I think I'm tracking with Rick, too, if you could do some kind of research, talk with the bee people about how high they really stack, can stack these things. I mean, if we're talking about two hives, each are stacked 10 boxes high, and we allow four hives stacked 10 boxes high, what does that really mean to us? John? Well, I was going to go on to some other things, but I would add.
I have a few others, too.
Okay, well, we'll go around then.
I guess, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce his name, Bill.
Bazook.
Bazook.
Bazook. I mean, I think he made a great point. If we're going to have urban farming, we're going to have commercial ventures that show up. And it seems to me that he's asking, now, maybe our code allows it, but he's asking to have animals within our code. Is that allowed now?
Yes. It's not an issue for, because it's a necessary use to the, which is a commercial retail use. So this is specific to residential. The urban animal keeping standards is aligned out in the use table in the residential section. It's being added to the other special area zones that allow residential use. So it is meant to be for residential. Commercial is dealt with different, no different than a pet store or anything else. They are allowed uses. That's just part of maybe some concern that he thinks he has to comply with this, but actually, these standards wouldn't even, wouldn't even be applied to him.
He can keep his chickens.
Right.
Okay. The other one, which was mentioned by somebody, and I thought about this during the testimony, is particularly in our, in our, close in downtown, we have a lot of lots that are very, very small, where there's virtually no yard space. Someone actually asked about minimum, I don't even answer on it, but I guess I'd like some input from staff on, should we really look to a minimum, particularly if we're going to enact alley access lots that I think, if I remember right, what Envision Eugene's talking about is a 2,500 square foot lot.
I think we, yeah, you're right.
So, I mean, that's small, now, if you have 1,000 square feet on it, it might be, but again, there's some, I think it's just something we should at least, if we don't address it in the code, we should at least discuss it for record purposes. The other one, somebody else made a comment that really hit a chord with me, that if we've got three people in a row that want to do these things, there ought to be some type of allowance where I don't need to have a setback if the people.
And we actually did, just so you know, we did write it in that way.
Okay.
So we actually intended for this code.
You wrote in.
Yes, because we actually state that the person that is responsible has to live on or adjacent to. So the whole intent was that neighbors could get together. The structures are what are not allowed within setbacks, but a structure doesn't have anything to do with where your animals roam. So if they didn't have a fence between their yards, for an example, they absolutely could do that. And that was our intent by allowing it not just on the property that they live on, but also adjacent to. So the code language in that was, that was our intent.
I guess that's not as clear to me. If I had four in a row, and my animal ran at four houses down, am I now in violations?
No, because you're responsible, so no, not four houses down. So you're talking about your neighbor next door to you. So that's what we're talking about. So.
I don't know, I'm just asking, a concern about that.
Because ultimately, the person responsible is going to be the person that's living with those impacts. So that was the intent behind it. So there's no requirement for that now. It was viewed as something that would help, kind of the compatibility, because obviously, the animal owner is going to be the one living there, dealing with those outcomes as well. So it was also trying to allow, pardon?
Right.
Yeah, and so that was, the intent was to allow them to be able to kind of consolidate maybe those areas. Maybe one person has the chickens and someone else has the goats, but they're all right there.
I'm catching, I'm learning on all this one.
Yeah.
Along with fences.
Yeah.
The last one, and I doubt there's a way to do this, but almost everybody here spoke to it, and I remember when we talked about changing the number of allowed dogs on a site, it was the same conversation. It's not the number, it's the responsible party.
Right.
And that really is important to me because I've lived next to somebody who's got one dog, and they can't take care of one dog, and never does, type of thing. And that's, again, it's complaint-driven, but it'd be nice if we could somehow get an educational component in here, that you have to get educated, because a lot of people just believe that you accumulate things like this and they take care of themselves. I mean, we read stories, horror stories all along, about, you know, people end up with 30 or 40 cats.
Mm-hmm.
And they're not taking care of them, you know? We have the abuses, and we've written kind of in here the abuse thing, but it'd be nice to be able to do something upfront versus waiting until it becomes a problem to have to deal with the issue.
Yeah, and that's kind of the best management practices, you know? And it's hard to put that in code, but it is definitely part of, you know, and with our new website, it is something that's already identified that we will be putting together some best management practices, trying to give that guidance for somebody that's maybe not as educated on beekeeping or keep having goats, but they like the idea of it. So we are actually wanting to be proactive in that, but it's harder to put that in clear and objective code language, so that's the challenge.
John?
Does that help?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the complaint process, is it going to be anonymous?
Yes, it can now. It never, it wasn't, it didn't used to be, but with the new website, they actually have the ability now, and you can submit them online to be anonymous.
You can also submit them through your neighborhood association, correct?
Yes, mm-hmm. And that's just recent.
The other question is, somebody suggested that maybe the impact of bee hives would be reduced if you had a requirement that the bee entrance not.
Yeah, I did hear that as well.
Probably. Just thought maybe you could come back to something on that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it wasn't something I saw from other jurisdictions, but it makes sense, because obviously, when they, you know, have their flight pattern, they do elevate to get to a certain elevation before they, you know, fly to.
But there may be some advantage to having a south-facing or a north-facing.
Right, right, I don't know. So I think that definitely will be something we'll take a look at.
Again, I don't know much either.
Bill?
Getting back to what Rick was commenting on as far as, you know, neighbors sharing, and you were saying that kind of the intent of writing it in was that way. I'm looking at number eight fencing, though, and it says fencing is required and shall be designed and constructed and confined all animals to the development site on which the animal is kept. Does that pose problems, then, the way it's worded for sharing backyards?
Well, we could drop the word development and just say to the site. I mean, you know, because development site is defined in the land use code, so that wouldn't work. It was our intent, so we can look at that.
I had a couple, John. Christie, for our discussion on the 17th, I think it's important to get on the record that we had a discussion about potential public health issues with this, whether it's rats, or, you know, the example of going to the fair and some little kid pets a goat, and next thing you know, he's got E. coli. So I have no idea how serious this might be, but if you could do some research with the extension agency or public health department or whatever, and.
Provide that?
Give us, yeah.
Okay.
What kind of public health issues may or may not be associated with farm animals? And then it just kind of dawned on me, this issue of fencing, and I'm thinking on PUDs. Does this, does, if somebody in a PUD wants goats, or a little pig, or chickens, can they fence in a PUD?
I think it depends on what the PUD is.
Well, yeah, can you?
Because sometimes there are CCNRs that a lot of PUDs would actually restrict.
It would be by CCNR, but what about city code?
They actually limit animals.
I mean, I think it depends on what kind of PUD you're talking about. If it's one where there's a natural area and we're trying to preserve the stream, typically, you know, a fence isn't allowed within that natural area.
Right.
And so they would have to meet those standards.
Okay.
For the water protection.
Right.
Yeah.
But, I mean, there are other PUDs that are just flat land and probably wouldn't be an issue, but I think that there's natural resources then.
And it wouldn't necessarily have to be kind of what you would maybe think intuitively, where it's just fenced on the property line. I mean, you could fence, you know, kind of a, cordon off an area, it wouldn't necessarily require you to.
Okay, okay.
Put in a six-foot-high fence on the property lines.
Yeah. And the only other thing, too, is the sanitation issue that Rick mentioned early on. Well, sanitation and nuisance, I guess, I'm just.
On the enclosure piece?
Yeah, if, if you have the neighbor that, for whatever reason, is irritated by the sounds that a goat makes, or a pig makes, or chickens make, at what point does it become a nuisance that, that it becomes a bona fide complaint? I know we have a noise standard in there of so much time over a certain period.
Right.
But that's like a dog barking, I guess. I mean, when we start introducing these other kinds of sounds, how are we going to deal with that if somebody is just dead set against?
I think the key is that it's continuous, if you look at that code language.
Okay.
I think that that's really, in talking with the enforcement staff that have to deal with other noise complaints, you know, not always related to animals.
Okay.
It's really the continuous, kind of like, you know, the annoyance in a sense of that, the continuation, not just really the irritation of.
If you could bring back an example of a comparable issue like this, whatever that noise issue might be, I don't know, if it's loud music or quiet music or whatever, but just see how it, how we might deal with that, okay?
Okay.
John?
The question of commercial, I understand that.
Backyard farmer.
The backyard farmer can have livestock as part of his ancillary use of his business, but does that mean a laundromat can have it, or is it, because it's used to the store?
Yeah, well, yeah, exactly. It's accessory to.
It has to be ancillary to the use.
Right, mm-hmm. That would be the, you know, obviously, that would be the key component, yeah.
So not any commercial enterprise can have livestock?
Right.
It's just those that.
Yeah, that's how we've.
A relevant to the.
I mean, why should you call your beehive security systems?
Yeah.
Good point.
When this gets out, that honeybees are not aggressive, though.
It was that.
Yeah.
It's the perception.
Yeah, yeah.
And they're not at night anyways.
Okay. Jeff?
I've pretty much done a lot.
Yeah, one of the things that was said that hit on me, and I'm going to mangle the last name, it was Pablo Valentine. Mentioned the possibility that a sliding scale for, for example, if you wanted to have 12 chickens, but you didn't want to have any rabbits, and you felt like that, you know, there should be some way to allow a person to say, "I'll use the word specialized" a little bit more and have a higher headcount. That seemed to have a base of common sense to me, that, you know, I don't know if that's something you, how we would write that into code or not, but I guess, to me, that was something that seemed to make sense to me, and it'd be good if we could somehow reflect that. The other thing, I guess, along the same lines of a sliding scale, and that is, we start talking about minimum lot size versus 20,000. And I'm leaving bees out of the, out of context here for the moment, but in terms of, it seems like if we're talking about a 4,000 square foot lot versus a 20,000 square foot lot. Right now, the code is, I would say, I understand it would allow the same headcount, total headcount on the 4,000 square foot lot as it would on the 20,000 square foot lot. I guess I question that.
19,999.
Right.
Say again?
19,999.
Yes, the 19,000, 19, yes, right, right. So to me, I think that, I question that, I question that in practical purposes, from a practical standpoint. And I think, once again, we're going to run to the fact that the problem's not going to be the animals, it's going to be the owners, but I think the challenges get greater if you have that, you know, you start saying, "Okay, I'm going to have this many animals on this small patch of land." To me, the management of everything would become more challenging in that regard. So that would be a comment that I would have. I'm not quite sure where I would, where I would expect you to take that. What is your thought on that?
Well, I think, as you witnessed from people that spoke, people have their specialty or their area of interest.
Yes.
And that's very common. People that have chickens typically have chickens. People that have bees, they have bees. I mean, I'm not hearing from anyone that wants this menu perspective of all of these things. And really, when you think of it, it's really the outcome of that. So if you do have a small alley access lot, you're just not going to be able to meet the sanitation, the noise, you know, the enclosure requirements.
Structure.
Right, and have every single thing, but you could have six chickens. You know, the impacts to your neighbors, maybe they're a lot less for bunnies than they are for 12, or a dozen, or two dozen chickens. I mean, chickens make noise. So that was part of the thought, is at what point is, you know, if it's really sustainability for a family, what's really sufficient to provide a byproduct, whether that's a food source, or the eggs, you know, what's, what's enough? So obviously, you've heard that chickens go through their range of how often they produce eggs, and there's always those dilemmas, but that's what I've really seen, is that even looking at the enforcement cases we've had in the past two years, it's always, usually people have their area of interest, and that's usually what they're targeting. It's not like they really truly want to farm in the city, and they're going to have all these things. So that's part of my thought on that. It doesn't mean that we couldn't, you know, maybe propose some sliding scale, or maybe more of the menu approach, where, you know, maybe you get to pick any of these things, what's your area of interest, but you don't get them all. I mean, we can.
Right, I guess that's, that's kind of what I'm wondering, if we need to have something that.
Yeah.
That would allow you to, you know, choose your.
Right.
Choose your interests, but perhaps not.
And it is interesting, because when you look at a lot of jurisdictions, they, they don't do that, but a lot of them also have licensing programs, if you have over three or something, and so, you know, and we can't even sustain the dog licensing program. So I mean, that's part of that reasoning behind that. So it's not always apples to apples when you're looking at other jurisdictions. There's just always a nuance.
I guess my, my last comment is, I just ask you to give that some thought.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you very much.
Rick, and then Bill.
It's great feedback.
I guess a question, then a couple of comments. I may be completely wrong on this, but I, I'm going to believe that, for cities of our size, or somewhat our size of large, that this is somewhat of a newer phenomenon, and maybe not.
We're behind the times.
Well, I understand that.
Yeah. There's a lot, yeah.
Really, my, my, my point was, it would be interesting to understand, because quite often, something like this, a code's put in place, and then we all move on to all the other things we do, and, you know, it doesn't come back, and we never look at it again until it becomes a crisis situation, or something's changed.
Oh, okay, uh-huh.
It would be interesting to see where, what some of these other jurisdictions have found. Ones that have actually had it in place for a while, not a year, two years, three years, four years, but some of it's actually, somewhere where they've actually had it in place for maybe a decade or more, what have they found to be the good things and the bad things, and, you know.
Right.
Try to get ahead of that curve, and say, gee, people have discovered, there's a situation here, there's a betterment, 200 chickens are fine in a backyard, whatever it is, but it would be nice to try to get ahead of that curve a little bit, so that we don't have to try to come back and revisit this, because we start getting oops, 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 and oopses down the road. The other thing, and I'm sure, part of my concern, and we heard from about, I'm going to say a dozen people tonight, we've got, I forget now, I should know this after all, Envision Eugene, but we've got tens of thousands of homes out there. And we heard from one person who was not in favor of it. We're talking about doing this citywide on all residential properties, and if I happen to be living in my home, and all of a sudden, this happens, I don't have the ability to tell the person next door, I don't want to live next to that. I think maybe Randy was pushing on that one, but. And I'm not necessarily saying it would be me, but I would have liked to have seen a situation where, either one, we tried it in an area to see how it worked, or almost a permitting process, but not really, you get a permit, but that you have to get input from your surrounding neighbors as to their beliefs about how do they feel about it, and so on, and so forth. One, it allows the neighbors to understand what's going on, instead of one day, all of a sudden, maybe hearing two goats and a pig out in the backyard next door, and not understanding what's going on. So I, I would have liked to have seen, you know, we have something where you have to get a buy-off from all your adjoining neighbors, or some number percent of that, or something like that, just as a way to fill out a form, so that it's brought in, and there's notification that that kind of thing occurs. We do it with all kinds of neighborhood requirements and everything else. It would just seem that way. If I'm really opposed to that, or I happen to be the person next door that is so allergic to bees, and I'm stunned again, it's a way to be able to better communicate with your neighbors. I have a friend who actually wears an EpiPen on her belt her whole life because of that. And I don't think we're looking at the people out there that really might not want this to occur. We're not giving them the opportunity, and we know when we give these kind of meetings like this, we don't give a turnout to do that. I think the other thing that we're also allowed to do is notification for people to check their CCNRs, because I'm sure that CCNRs are probably going to say, no thanks, but that becomes now a civil case. So now, I've got to sue my neighbor to stop them from doing something, and we've created an adverse situation, where notification upfront to check your CCNRs, make sure you don't do that. I mean, I go through it in my life, there's a lot of people that don't even know what their CCNRs are, or what, and limits in their properties, or anything else, and they're amazed when they find out they can't do something. But it just gives notification to do those kind of things. If you had a process, and I know it's kind of cumbersome, but at least it allows people to have a better feeling that they know what's going on next door in the neighborhood. Bill?
Well, I think, Christie, you answered at least a little bit. One of my questions was similar to what Jeff was asking, as far as the sliding scale, and I guess I'll maybe ask it again, or maybe in a different way. Do you find that there are bee people, and goat people, and chicken people, in that people don't tend to, in your experience, want a menagerie of breeding animals?
Right. I mean, that's my experience from the people I've talked to, the interactions of that I've had. I mean, you know, I think that there are some people that may now, because that's really all they've been allowed to have. I mean, people have bees, bees are not allowed technically in our code. We do consider, you know, one hive is a necessary use to a residential use, and that's just kind of an interpretation. So, you know, when you think of what's allowed out there now, I'm sure that there are people that are like, you know, I have chickens, and I can't wait till I can have my two goats. But more than likely, you know, you're not going to see, you know, the whole menu approach, is my thought. Doesn't mean they're not going to add another animal hive, or, you know, maybe they'll add some bees as well. It's hard to know. But that's what my experience has been up to this point, that there's definitely advocates usually on, on specific animals.
Sure, okay. Then just two more questions. One, I've, and I think I brought this up, or somebody's brought it up before, the 20,000-foot lots, or larger than 20,000-foot lots, that we don't have a limit on chickens, rabbits, and domestic fowl, but yet, it seems we've got limits on everything else. And I understand that it really gets down to a responsible owner, ultimately, but I think that applies on any of them with the numbers, and so I think I would recommend having some sort of maximum on lots over 20,000 for chickens and fowl, and it might even be based on a square footage of the lot, similar to what we do for, I think, horses and cows, because there's some area requirements. So if you have 20,000 square feet, you get X number of fowl. If you have a 30,000-foot lot, you get some increment more, that sort of thing. So I think I would maybe suggest looking at that. And then, on sanitation, we have ensuring odors resulting from the animals are not detectable beyond the property lines. Is it, or would it be wise to consider something related to flies? Because I know flies can carry a disease, and if there's manure and those sorts of things, they can become a real nuisance. And I don't know if that's, if you've seen that in any of the other codes, if that's an issue, if, if the odors would kind of self-regulate that.
Right, right.
You know, or, or not. But just, I'd throw that out for thought, I guess.
John?
I just want to reiterate that I too really need to see.
Sorry.
Maximum limit on grade of 20,000. And Rick said something, I just want to make sure it's true. They're not allowed in all residential zones. Right now, it's just R1 and AG, is that correct?
No, it's not.
All residential.
Sorry.
And special areas.
So current code allows, so current code, how it's, is that what you're asking me? Or what it's proposed?
What's proposed?
It is permitted outright in R1, R2, R3, R4, AG, PL, and all special area zones which allow residential uses. That's the proposal.
So in a commercial zone that allows residential uses, these animals could be allowed?
Well, when you say a commercial zone, no, these are special area zones.
So what do you for special use?
Yeah, right, exactly.
So what do you, what do you?
But you'd have to live on the site because of the requirement, residents.
And in the case of a R3 apartment complex, who gets to decide, who gets to see?
The owner. I mean, if they even allow it. I mean, that's up to them, really.
Yeah, you could always write a contract that doesn't allow it.
Because in that instance, it'd probably be more of a pet, perhaps.
Okay.
And the apartment owners regulate pets.
And we do have a lot of.
But it would still be a lot, so even if they were 150 residents, you couldn't have 150 times X.
No. And, you know, the main reason for that is, we do have a lot of large lots in the River Road area that have R2, R3 zoning.
I see.
Yeah, and so, you know, it wasn't our intent to, none of us.
Any other questions, comments for Christie?
I guess I just want to chime in with John and with Bill about the 20,000-plus. I understand that's not in the code now, but I think if we're looking at it, we should look at it.
Okay.
It'd be nice to get a more substantial.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Just, oh, Bill? Just one quick comment back to the minimum lot size.